Call to order the Parker Town Council for May 20, 2024 at 7:00 PM. All Town Council members are present. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items not on tonight's agenda. This comment period is limited to the first 30 minutes of the meeting, and we will pick it up if there's any overflow at the end of the meeting. At this point, I don't have any public comments signed up on my list, but do we have anyone in the audience wishing to make comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports, items, and comments from Mayor and Council. I'll start to my immediate right. Councilmember Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, I attended the Parker Senior Center Board Meeting, also the Rotary of Parkers' State of the Town, and finally, to touch a truck, relive my youth touching all those trucks from the Public Works Department. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 7th, along with several other council members and Mayor, we had the State of the Town, and then immediately following, we attended the Centennial's State of the Town. The city. Sorry, not the hundred year.
It's just hard to keep them all.
And then I attended the Downtown Business Alliance Meeting, also the same day, Celebration of Life for our town's very first employee, and then the partnership for Douglas County on the 15th, and then today, several of us attended a farewell celebration for Lone Tree's Mayor, Jackie Malley.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. Yeah, it was dated last week, State of Our Town, presented by the Parker Rotary Club. Jeff did a great job, and then we all the honor of racing up to Castle Rock, or Castle Rock Centennial. Too many Cs. City of, State of the City with Mayor Stephanie Pico, saw the Wings of the Rockies Annex, if you will. Great facility and a great presentation. And then this week, Councilwoman Wilks and I did interviews for Planning Commission members. Again, always taken aback by the level of volunteers that we have in this community. Wednesday was Partnership of Douglas County Governments, and then Thursday, I had Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority meeting, and getting some good news, hopefully, on some federal grants to help us with some washouts that we've had in the reservoir itself. So, a good weekend, all in all.
Councilmember Dyak.
Thank you. On the 9th, I had an E470 meeting. The meeting was, you know, from my perspective, the highlights were largely financial. The audit report was given, it's a clean audit. That's good news. The annual report was provided to the board members by staff, and also the financial statements, if you will, this was part of the audit. Again, everything looks, looks good. Again, inflation's a little challenging, so we're in a capital spend cycle at E470, so some of those smaller projects we thought we could do are being eaten up by the dreaded inflationary pressures to increase costs of the larger projects. We also had a bond refunding discussion. We need to refund or refinance some bonds to save some money, even this, even in this high interest rate environment, so that's good. On the 15th, Dr. Cog, we approved the operational organizational budget of $58 million. We approved some 5310 Federal Transportation Authority money. I think Douglas County is getting a couple, a tranche of that, a couple hundred thousand, two or three hundred, if I remember correctly. We had an RTD Fast Tracks Annual Report. Again, all the highlights were really non-Parker, Douglas County specific, and we had a state legislative wrap-up, so that is all.
Councilmember Wilks.
Yeah, so on the Douglas County Youth Initiative, we had our board meeting, and we went over, we had special guests from The Warehouse, which, if you don't know about it, they're an amazing program down in Castle Rock that opens up their doors to teens to have something other than getting into trouble to do, and it's just a phenomenal, I could talk about it for a while, but we talked about how impactful that program is on the community and for the teens. We went over the Outstanding Youth Awards for 2024 and started talking about what that's going to look like next year to make it even bigger and better, and we reviewed dedicated spaces for the youth, and specifically looking at high schools and community mental health programs for our youth. On the 15th, I attended an awards ceremony at the Parker Police Department held by the Rotary Club honoring a couple of our officers and the outstanding work that they've done in our community. And then on the 16th, we, I attended the grand opening and ribbon cutting for the Ark Thrift Store here in Parker, which is just phenomenal. The CEO and owner of Ark Thrift Store is Lloyd. He's very involved in the IDD community, and a lot of his employees, I can't remember the exact percentage, but it's a high number, their employees are actually part of the IDD community, the developmental needs and that type of thing. So it was wonderful just to welcome them into our town and get to hear about their story and what they're going to bring. And then, along with everything else that we had said, I'm also working, now that we're out of session, on our public safety and crime prevention and getting with some of our state legislators and even on a federal level. One of the things that we're working on right now, talking about our mental health, is we're also talking about the physical health, so we've got some things going, which hopefully we'll be able to collaborate with South Metro on and take care of our officers. That's all.
Councilmember Hefte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I had the opportunity to spend about nine days in Florida, and I want to just, I had a lovely time, but I just want to give a shout-out for Parker Rec. As you travel around the country, you will not find the quality of recreation that you find in other states. So, the pools are just outstanding, our recreation trails are outstanding here, and I love Florida, but I said, where's the pool? Where's the trail? So, thank you again, Parker Rec, because I always notice these things when I go to a small town. I had a lovely time, I got to rest and relax. I also went to Jackie Malley's City of Lone Tree farewell tonight, and I also had the, some time to talk to some constituents about coming to future HOA meetings that we have. We have two meetings a year with HOA and residents, and I had the time to direct them to the HOA Resources page on the Town of Parker website. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you all. All right, Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote. There'll be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussions. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So I've been made aware that there is a consideration on Item G, Resolution Number 24-030. Councilmember Rivera?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve, remove, excuse me. I move to remove Item G from the consent agenda for further discussion and vote, please.
Second.
All right, is there any other exclusions to the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. The motion was made by Rivera, seconded by Hefte. Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefte?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. So, Council, up for your consideration now on the, on the consent agenda are Items 4A through 4J, with the exception of G.
I move to approve consent agenda items 4A through 4G, 4J, with the exception of G, please.
Second.
Motion is made by Rivera, seconded by Wilks. Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefte?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. So, Item G, Resolution Number 24-030, a resolution to approve the employment agreement for the town attorney, an activity that has only happened three times within the Town of Parkers and Corporations. So, Council, we will start off with comments, starting with Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. I thought it was important, going through the consent tonight, that the public gets the opportunity to meet our new town attorneys shortly. Jamie has done an incredible job as our deputy town attorney and then our interim town attorney, and it was a well-deserved appointment. We went through a valued process, using the taxpayer dollars wisely, and made sure we had the best candidate, and lo and behold, of course, we had the best candidate in-house, and I believe it'll be our honor tonight to, to show that. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington.
I can't top that. We're excited to welcome you officially.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Yes, I'm honored to have you in this room and look forward to continue working with you for many years.
Councilmember Dyak.
Did you let Jamie know you were pulling that? Because I could imagine the sudden sense of...
She, as Randy stated, she stomped her foot, and she was, she agreed.
I really don't think Jamie really wants the notoriety, because she's, she's a quality person, and she does things for the front of the jersey, not the back of the jersey. But, no, I mean, it's just, it's, it's great that we have, we have people that talent, we can attract talent and, and have them rise and ascend through the ranks. It's a pretty shallow rank org structure, but it's, it's great that we have, we have the talent here in-house to take care of our needs, and when, when someone leaves, unfortunately, somebody steps up, so going out and seeing, just further accentuated that we're doing the right things here in town, so thank you.
Councilmember Wilks.
Well, this is the first time I've gotten to be a part of getting a town attorney. Like you said, we've had now three in our history, so I'm just, I'm very excited, and I know that you've always got our backs, and you've always got the town's back, and you're just, you're a phenomenal human being, so congratulations.
Councilmember Hefte.
Yeah, I've been around a lot of attorneys in my life, and I can spot quality when I see it. Not only does Jamie bring an outstanding legal mind to the Town of Parker, but it's her personal qualities, and those are the qualities you look for in an attorney, empathy, compassion, balance, and the ability to make decisions even when your personal feelings may be the opposite. And so, I think Jamie is going to make an outstanding town attorney, and all of us are very happy to welcome you.
All right, and because y'all pulled it off the calendar, we're going to open it up for public comment. If anyone from the public or internal staff, you didn't bring your staff tonight, so good move, shows bravery on your part, but anyone from the public wishing to make a public comment, we'll open it at 7:12 and close it at 7:12. Council, I forego with any final comments and look for a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-030.
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-030.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Rivera, seconded by Hendricks. Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefte?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. For the first time anywhere, congratulations, Madam Town Attorney. We can take out that interim thing now, it's never good anyways. All right, let's move on to some ordinances, some other legal stuff. All right, we have, I believe, five ordinances on our agenda tonight. The first ordinance is Number 3.372 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to repeal Title 13 of the Parker Municipal Code, exempt sections 13.04.010 through 13.04.030, section 13.04.050 through 13.04.165, section 13.04.180, and section 13.04.270 through 13.04.300, and to reenact Title 13 of the Parker Municipal Code, except sections 13.04.010 through 13.04.210. This must be Mary Munichata that did this to me, so. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm not going to repeat that long title, we are here for the Land Development Ordinance Adoption Public Hearing. So, before we begin, I just, I'm going to pass it off to Don and Gabby, but I do want to thank everybody on our project team. We are thrilled to be here after a few years, multiple years, of working on this project. And so, project team, Stacy Nergar on my right over here, we've got Gabby Hart and Don Elliott from Clarion Associates who have been instrumental in rewriting this with us, Bryce Matthews behind me, and John Fusa, all part of the project team. So, everybody has worked hard and diligently for the last five-plus years, and so I want to just do a big shout-out. Lastly, to our legal team, Jamie, we have also Jim Maloney, who has been very instrumental since day one, and Kelsey Hall, so thank you for our legal team as well, and everybody else involved, all of our departments, Public Works, Parks, everyone. So, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Don and Gabby, and then I'll be back with you at the end for a recommendation.
And Mary, just to confirm, this is an ordinance, right, not a public hearing? Okay, perfect, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary. We have a very short presentation tonight. We're not going to reiterate every detail, we'd be happy to answer questions, but we do want to summarize where we've been. You have seen, if I can do this, this table many times before. This is our project timeline, it started in October of 2018, we were interrupted with COVID, and we, here we are in the spring of 2024 at the final, second reading, final adoption. You know that this was done in, in an iterative fashion, you can see in the black boxes, we first, we did, we did an analysis on the left-hand side, and then divided this into modules. I will point out again, something we've talked to you about before. Each one of those black boxes, we often do one draft with our clients. Your staff, I think wisely, said, we'd like two drafts. We want to go around and make sure it goes around the horn to all the city departments and all the people who's got a stake in it, and then we want to go around again before we make it public, and then we'll amend it again based on public comments. There has been an exceptional amount of kind of thoughtful review of this by your staff, more than we normally experience in our large and complex city clients. Further, I will, I am personally grateful that staff and you have set up your schedules that in the last several years, we've been able to get in front of the Planning Commission for each of these modules and to you for work sessions. If you ask me at the beginning of any complex code project, what is one of the secrets to success, I'd say frequent exposure so that we hear from you and we hear from the Planning Commission all through the process. So it's not something that pops up at the last minute that would have been discussed and explained, and a compromise reached, or some agreement reached along the way. So, in that sense, too, our ability to speak with Planning Commission and with you, this has been an exceptionally involved process, and so we are, it was very thoughtfully designed by your staff, and I think very thoughtfully carried out. I've also pointed out in our previous meetings, it's been a lot of public exposure, public involvement, public integration, public explanation. At each one of those modules, there were work, town, just work sessions and community meetings. The part, the Talk Parker website has now had about 4,900 contacts based on this project, the LDL update. In the process, we sometimes get a question, have you run this by the builders, those who actually build the things that we want to have built in Parker, or rebuild them when they have to be replaced? About 40 different builders were contacted along the way, and then especially at the adoption draft phase. So it's, look, it's shaping up, we've put it all together, we've responded to the comments, and here's what it is. And so that also went out to a large number of people who actually build things and who had an opportunity to say, that works for us, that doesn't work on us. And all through this process, we've made changes. Literally, just a couple of weeks ago, before you got it on first reading, we were again making changes to make sure that the thoughts of the other city departments or town departments and the other stakeholders are being reflected here. So, I will not repeat this because of the long section of things that are or not be, are and are not being approved tonight, I will say the purpose of this is, we have drafted an integrated land development ordinance. In the process, we designed and discussed with you a new menu of zoning districts, mixed use zoning districts, downtown zoning districts, other zoning districts that we think will serve the town well as it matures. A lot of things have been done by PUDs over the years, that is fine, there's nothing getting wiped out, but as the town matures, many, many towns want to move from a system where you have to renegotiate a PUD each time into a system where the builders have options and can say, we would rather get this zone district, it's better for us. Those zone districts are what are not getting adopted tonight, because they need to be mapped, and the staff is currently mapping those. So, everything is being adopted that we have drafted for the last six years, over the six-year process or five-and-a-half-year process, but those are coming forward in the next several months as the town takes these draft ordinances that are in that particular section of the LDO and matches them to a map, to make sure that things are being mapped fairly and that people are aware of what's going on. So that is the reason why we have kind of a two-stage process here. We endorse this in the sense that often it is very difficult to talk about both the text and the map at the same time. Something has to stand still, or the property owners can't understand what is being discussed. And so, we have been trying to negotiate this, but that is what the town is doing over the next couple of months, and that is why we have this list of things that are not being adopted tonight but are scheduled to be adopted or anticipated in the next several months. So, once again, and you've seen versions of this before, and this is my last slide before I turn it over to Gabby for some summary. The key goal, the overriding goal here, is that you did a very thoughtful job of thinking about the future of the community, that's the Parker 2035 Master Plan. The most effective thing, we think, because of what we do, that you can do to make that happen, some of it is what you do every week, you invest in the things that you want to invest in and need to invest in. The other thing is to align your laws with your plan, so that each person who comes in to expand a business, to put an addition on a house, to lay out a new subdivision, everybody is contributing through the regular development process to the achievement of your master plan goals. The rest of this, I'm not going to read. Predictability, transparency has been a big goal. Can we be clearer about how the Town of Parker operates, which is a credit to every, which is helpful to every citizen? They shouldn't have to have a lawyer with you, you shouldn't have to have a helper, shouldn't have to have a graduate degree to figure out what you can do with your property. That's been a big goal to try to say, can we be clearer, can we be more user-friendly, can we be more efficient? And with that, I will pass it over to Gabby to talk about some of the details just briefly in the different sections of the ordinance.
Thank you, Don. Okay, so like Don said, these are just some highlights. Obviously, there is a lot of great stuff in all 300-some pages of this document, but we figured we'd give you the highlights. So first and foremost, we've reorganized the structure of the code itself right now within the municipal code or within the land development ordinance. There are bits and pieces of things scattered in, in lots of different places, and so really we're trying to, to make all those pieces fit into one puzzle and know what picture that puzzle is creating. So there are nine chapters, and we've clarified the sustainable development techniques, including the protection of hillsides, streams, and then your current visually significant ridge lines. And then we've also updated things like the definitions and all the different terminology to make it clear for everyone to understand and for more consistent interpretations across applicants, staff, and Planning Commission and Council as well. And then also, we've enhanced the development quality standards, and I'll get into a few of those in a minute. But throughout the code, we've improved the formatting and the graphics. There are a lot of key summary tables, which are really great, especially because they capture a lot of information in a much more digestible way. Right now, the document is a lot of just text, the code right now is a lot of text, and so we've tried to create these tables, and there's some key ones in there. There's the use table, which is where, what captures what you can do on your property once those zoning districts are in place. There's this development procedures table, but then there's also just a lot of different, anywhere we could, where it'd be easier to read in table format, and we put that in a table. And then there are also supporting graphics. Obviously, we can't take away all of the technicalities of a zoning code and of development, so where we thought certain standards would benefit from a exemplary graphic, we added that. So a lot of those development standards will include some extra graphics just to help visually interpret the text. Moving into clearer and more predictable standards, just again, some highlights, some examples, we have added non-residential and mixed-use development needs to step down in height when it's adjacent to lower-density residential development, so really just responding to the context of development and making sure the shift from residential to commercial is compatible with the area, especially when the town is moving towards more mixed-use development. We've added high-quality landscaping with more flexibility in how to get to that high-quality landscaping, and then related to parking, we not only have updated those standards to be more predictable, and they're based on use type, the parking table directly aligns with the use table, so when you come in with a business, you will know it will match its exact description in the use table and the parking table, again, just trying to be more user-friendly. But we've also aligned this LDO with new state laws about electric vehicle charging stations. And then finally, in the outdoor lighting, we've added standards for LED signs and then standards related to lighting efficiency. For clearer and more efficient procedures, so this is that development procedures summary table that captures which procedures and application types you might be applying for if you have some additional meeting requirements, so things like a pre-application meeting or a neighborhood meeting, which I'll talk about on a further slide, as well as who is the review and decision authority, and if there's going to be a public hearing involved. So it's really a good way to easily capture kind of a quick, what type of process am I looking at if I'm trying to get this development going? So those neighborhood meetings, those are new, and they are, they're new as an official requirement. Some applicants have done neighborhood meetings as part of larger developments, but this formalizes the process. So, those are required for larger development proposals, and those are applicant facilitated. So the applicant would host a neighborhood meeting after they have submitted the application to the town, but before the public hearing. That way, they can get resident input on potential impacts of the project, as well as just as a way to educate surrounding neighborhood or the community about what the project is. We have also shifted a few things into administrative approval, which means approval by staff. That includes minor development plaits, and minor development plaits are those plaits that are for non-residential or multifamily projects, and then for or less single-family residential lots. So right now, those go up to council, and those are going to be administratively approved, that is very common practice across Colorado communities. In addition, we have created the Framework Plan, which replaces the current sketch and preliminary site plans, and that is going to staff, because again, that's, that's a conceptual level plan that's really just trying to identify any major issues before it gets to the point that it would be before Planning Commission and Town Council. Another new tool for staff are administrative allowances, and these are minor modifications, so things like five or 10% maybe, adjustments to things like setback or parking requirements to accommodate unique site conditions. And a clarification there is that those would not apply within PUDs. PUDs are still subject to their own rules and regulations. This would be related to anything that is in a base zoning district, staff would be able to do that. And then alongside the LDO being adopted by reference is the LDO Administrative Manual, and this collects all of the different application requirements, all of the submittal requirements that an applicant must have for all of the different types of applications in order to have a complete application. And it really collects a lot of different resources, a lot of information, checklists, you know, plat dedication language, all of those details were removed from the actual LDO itself and will live in this manual, that can be updated without a formal LDO amendment. And it also includes links to the fee schedule, the development design standards, some of those outside engineering manuals, so really just a great, great tool for both town staff and applicants to have access to. So in conclusion, in addition to better aligning with and implementing the master plan, we've improved the development standards. Again, just trying to make more predictable and efficient processes through better definitions and easier to understand regulations, but also adding greater clarity and readability, user-friendliness, which creates greater transparency and ease of use.
Thank you, Gabby. Staff recommendation. Planning Commission heard this item on April 25th and unanimously recommended approval. So with that, staff and Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the proposed ordinance 3.372, adopting the land development ordinance. And that concludes our presentation, and we are happy, the entire project team, to answer any questions.
Councilmember Hefta, we'll start with you. No questions?
Just a few thoughts. You know, I'm most impressed with your administrative manual. Whoever came up with that concept, who came up with that concept?
I'll just say, all of us.
Wonderful. Because so often in, in a technical world like this, you needed administrative manual to, to accompany the LDO. So I just want, my comments are, that is fabulous. I'm really glad you did that and you put the forms on and you made this whole process very user-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilks, questions?
Yeah, so two questions. First of all, I love this. It's awesome. When you guys say that the neighborhood meetings is required, how do we quantify and inspect what we expect? Like, are they required to have a percentage of attendees from the neighborhoods there? And how do we make sure that they've actually complied with that requirement?
I'm going to let Stacy answer that. We are used to asking the applicants for neighborhood meetings, but now it is codified.
So what the regulations outline is who you should send a notice to. There is no quantification of how many people should attend. Having the meeting is just having the meeting. Staff will try to attend these meetings as well, just to be there and listen to what the public has to say. But typically, it's one meeting. If there is something that comes up and it is written into the code that you go to this meeting and there's a lot of people and there's a lot of stuff that the applicant needs to address, there is a way for the town to require an additional meeting.
Okay, thank you. And the second question, so when we're talking about high-quality landscape materials, are we also addressing the water conservation side of that and the Colorado scape, the zero scape that we have talked about and what that looks like moving forward with essentially conserving our water?
So this landscape plan that's in here does not address that at this time. That is something the town's going to be looking at and having to amend. So there will be an additional amendment to this to start to address that, but it wasn't included in this.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Dayak?
Yeah, nothing is ever perfect on the first go around. So I mean, with, with that, is there, is there a, a time period that we can sort of look ahead to like a year or two years or number of projects to kind of take stock and see what potentially needs to be tweaked? Is there sort of a rule of thumb there for that?
That's a great question. And we are, as you know, we've come to you several times over the years with amendments. So the rule of thumb is when we need to amend, we will come and speak with council and then get your forward direction and do that amendment. But absolutely, we always joke about adopting a plan or a code, and the next day, we're starting that spreadsheet of items that may need to be tweaked again. So that can be right on the early horizon. And if we have state legislation coming down that we also need to address, of course, we would amend based on council's direction.
If I could add just a bit to that, one of the things that, it's kind of a silver lining from your point of view, it keeps your laws and your administrative structures up to date. They don't get out of date the way they have in the past. What we found over the years is it's particularly helpful to citizens and homeowners associations because if you do it on a predictable schedule, it is annual or two, or they know in advance, it's just so much easier than them having to watch the website and watch for each individual thing that comes along. So any, any predictable schedule, whether it's, there are cities in the metro area that do it every year, there's some that do it every two years. Any predictable schedule is better than no predictable schedule for the citizens because they have, they got families to raise, they got businesses to run. They want to be involved, but they don't want to have to watch all the time for the evolution of the code.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Thank you, no questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
So as Councilmember Dayak mentioned, nothing is quite perfect, the first go around, and especially 40 years later. Obviously, some things have, have changed, and I know there's been things that have been maybe piecemealed in or, you know, but there's still some, some inconsistencies. And so this is just going to make it so much easier for everyone to understand, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you. Thank you. My first question, I think, is, is for Clarion. Obviously, this town hires the best, and you guys were highly recommended, and five-year project is no easygoing, and we had COVID in the midst. Can you speak to the amount of citizen involvement you saw during this project as compared?
As compared to other communities that we've worked in? It's hard to draw those comparisons across communities. I would say that it equals or exceeds. It probably exceeds, especially given COVID. And given, to be very honest, people care deeply about Parker, but they like it. We get the most citizen involvement in places who don't like where they live and want radical changes in what they're doing. So for a high-quality suburban community, fairly large, complex, you're in the path of growth, you had significantly more citizen involvement than we often get. But I, but I want to say, I've been in places that have had 110 meetings, but that's because people are mad as heck at their government and at their town, and that's not the case here.
And I guess the same question for the 40-odd building partners that you talked about. How was that involvement as compared to previous projects?
Oh, for a, for a community this size, that's a very good level of public involvement. You never can get them all, you know, there's, there's, these days, a lot of places are rewriting their codes for a whole bunch of reasons, and it is notoriously hard to get developers involved. They're building, they're busy building houses. They're busy doing what everybody wants them to do. And so I think it was, it was a great effort, and I think that the fact that they've reached out to so many, and, and we got good comments back from a number of them. It was great. It is hard to get developer, and for all the understandable reasons, it's hard to get them to participate.
And that's a, a great segue into my, my last question. Of the citizens and the developers, could you speak to specific ordinances or specific policy in here that was created because of comment from a citizen and/or developer?
Wow, I have to look down the road here.
So I'd say one of them was the administrative allowances. So that is something that when a site plan, for example, is under review to build a building, and it's very minor, the changes you can make, but there are setback changes or height allowances that you can make to that building. I think it's like 5% for height to get better design, and there are criteria in that. So we have heard that for variations. We have heard support for moving the minor development plat to an administrative process. There are strict codes in place as to what that developer has to meet to meet that minor development plat. And making that administrative just helps the process go a little bit quicker. So just adding those, I know that first spreadsheet or table that shows who makes the decision, can it be appealed, and where does it go? We've gotten a lot of compliments on that as well as it gives transparency as to what they're expecting.
Outstanding, outstanding. And transparency leads to certainty, which is what they're after, Claire. And then lastly, you know, as governments grow or as communities grow, they get more and more bureaucratic. But the goal here was, was streamlining, and the goal here was, was making things simpler for everybody involved. Do you, is it your opinion, this is less bureaucratic than what we had before?
Most definitely, yes, most definitely. Easier to understand. That's, that's the first thing that comes to mind and easier to use, so.
Well, and I would say, I keep coming back to this, the minor development plat was an awkward situation. You're having a hearing on something where the details have not been worked out. That's frustrating to everybody involved. They want to talk details that details haven't been created yet. And so that's another example of, all right, it has to be done, but it doesn't have to, it's almost misleading to the public to have a public hearing on it because we don't know yet. They're trying to lay out the basics. And so that's one example of kind of say, good governance would say, you're going to see it in the future, but you're, but at this, these minor things just are kind of technical exercises.
Yeah, and I look directly to the framework plan versus, I mean, it's, it's absolutely simpler. So thank you for your answers.
All right, with that, we'll open a public, public comment on ordinance number 3.372 at 7:38. Anyone from the public wishing to make comment on the LDO modernization? Say none. We'll close it at 7:38 and bring it back to council for any final comments in the reverse order. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you. This was a, a much-needed update. It's, it's still PUDs in place, and we still have negotiations for the future of Parker on a site-by-site basis. But this and our redevelopment and as we build, not as we build out, but as we rebuild older community parts, this will make for a more thorough and more, I don't say more thorough, that's not the right word, a better process to allow what the citizens want in their community. I am thoroughly impressed by the citizen involvement, 4,900 views. I know that I attended, you know, a couple of early meetings when we still could, and, and the citizen involvement was, was outstanding. And that goes to Clarion's interactive presentations and, you know, putting stuff on the floor for people to walk on and, and, you know, all those, those fascinating things that happened. Again, thoroughly impressed. You know, it didn't match our master plan. It was, our land development ordinance was 40 years old, and our master plan was, was, is forethinking in, in what the future is. And our LDO was dated, and as, as Councilwoman Barrington said, hodgepodge and, and mix-matched, and, and, you know, we would think of something and it would get added. And then to my personal opinion, I am extremely happy about the ridge lines and the streams and the dendritic protections. It is absolutely the future, and it's going to save this community money on concrete infrastructure and protect the natural hillsides and things that we have in our community. I look to communities that have, you know, bulldozed and create grids within a, you know, within a suburban area and to take, take advantage of the natural topography we have in our community is something that I am so, so happy is codified. Well done. I look forward to the zoning maps and finishing this project.
Councilwoman Barrington?
So I think the goals are to make it more straightforward and streamlined and transparent, but it's going to lay out clear expectations for anyone submitting an application, whether it be a homeowner or a very experienced builder or developer. So I'm really happy to see that. It's just, I think it'll make the whole review process just a lot more streamlined again. So thank you. Great, great work.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yeah, long time coming. It's amazing you're here today, but I appreciate all your work. I think this will be a great benefit for the town of Parker going forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Dayak?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm optimistic, but I just kind of, I'm curious just to see how seamless and this is going to be. I don't think it's going to be quite as end-to-end as, but, but again, I think we're trying to, we're trying to rebuild something that, that's largely been, been done. We've, we've kind of done everything, so it's not my wheelhouse, but I'm, I'm sure we'll hear about it if, if there are things that need to be changed.
Councilwoman Wilks?
Anytime we can give clarity and education to the people, I'm, I'm happy with and I'm thrilled about, you know. Like you said, you shouldn't have to have a degree to figure out how to make this work in our town. And the amount of work and effort that you guys have put in, it clearly shows through. And, you know, I know that, like we've said, this is the first draft, and there'll be many more amendments, but this is an amazing first round, and I'm very excited about it. So thank you, guys.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yeah, you know, there's so many administrative processes up here. We're just policymakers, okay? We don't see all the work that goes on in all the departments. And there are so many administrative decisions that are made every day in accordance with our codes and our policies. And so that's something I just want to put out there. We're just policymakers up here. The real people doing the work of this town are our staff, are our directors, are our employees of all types. And so you've come before us tonight, and this is just an incredible body of work that you've done. You've made this more transparent to the public. What I like the best of all is you've created expectations for applicants. And you've put in that manual, what we're going to give you, but what we expect of you when you submit an application. That's extremely important. So as a town grows, a town has to adopt and implement new policies, new regulations, and improve upon itself. And so this is a long time in coming since 1981. You've taken many years since 2018 to put this together. You've collaborated with the public, with directors, with residents, with town council, with the mayor, with so many people. You've, you've brought this together, and so thank you for your hard work. And I know you probably had a few battles there over things. But thank you, John Fusa and your staff for your hard work, and thank you, sir, for also being one of the lead project managers on this. Thank you.
All right, well, that will entertain a motion on ordinance number 3.372.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.372 on second reading, please.
Second.
Brandy, was that you?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made by Rivera, seconded by Wilks. Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dayak? Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Next up is ordinance number 9.369 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement by and between the town of Parker and the state of Colorado acting by and through the Colorado Department of Transportation concerning Parker Road and Main Street intersection operational improvements, pre-con, project number STUM 039-01126078, OLA number 331003200, routing number 24HA1-XC-00228. Again, Munikada, it's always you with the complicated ones.
Thank you. Waiting for, there we go. Excellent. Thank you again, and good evening, mayor and council. Again, this is a presentation for the intergovernmental agreement between the Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT, and the town of Parker. Next slide, thanks. Tonight's request is to approve ordinance 9.369 for the establishment of an IGA between CDOT and the town. So since Parker Road is a CDOT facility, the proposed ordinance will establish the required IGA with CDOT that enables the town to receive some grant funding. That is a $500,000 grant that we were awarded. The grant will be used for conceptual design only for future improvements to the Parker Road and Main Street intersection in that vicinity. And this is just a general vicinity map. The Parker Road corridor plan that was adopted by council in December of 2019, that plan recommends alternatives to improve safety and multimodal operations around Parker Road and Main Street. That is a high-volume intersection, and those were important alternatives to consider. And so tonight, this IGA, the plan that has the preferred alternative in it is the displaced left turn. And that's also known as a continuous flow intersection. That left-turning traffic is displaced from the main intersection to allow through traffic to proceed through the main intersection. Anyway, that conceptual design is what we're looking for to see if this is a feasible project in the future, and we will be back in front of council to present that conceptual design. Little more background, in 2022, the town submitted a grant application for the Dr. COG, which is the Denver Regional Council of Governments, fiscal year '24 to 2027, their transportation improvement program, the TIP program, subregional call for projects. That's what we responded to with this application. The grant request was, again, for conceptual design only for a displaced left turn continuous flow intersection. And the town was notified of the grant award for the $500,000 in August of last year. of last year, and the town will be providing matching funds up to $250,000, so the project will be a total of seven, up to 750. So, in summary, an IGA, again, is required to receive these grants for the conceptual design of future improvements of the Main Street-Parker Road intersection. Funding for the required match and design are scheduled for the 2025 budget, and then next steps after the IGA is hopefully approved includes the release of an RFP for engineering design consulting services. And with that, staff recommends town council approve the proposed ordinance 9.369 on second reading, and that concludes our presentation. We have staff here for questions and answers.
Councilmember Dyak, do you want to kick us off with questions?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, it's great we're getting money, I just, the continuous flow, I just, are we ready for that? I mean, that's a, that is not Parker. It's not anybody, really.
It is, it's definitely different, so I'm, I'm going to say possibly there is a hybrid, a modified continuous flow there, the displaced lefts.
But we're doing the design to kind of figure it out.
That's exactly right. So, if it's a hybrid conceptual design, it's also telling us whether it's all feasible or not.
All right.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Can you describe a continuous flow for the record, so we're all aware of what that is?
Continuous flow, the displaced left turn, continuous flow intersection displaces the left turn and allows the continuing traffic on the main road to continue through simultaneously as a left turn can also turn, so they're both able to proceed at the same time simultaneously. So, that's a true displaced left continuous flow intersection, but again, you know, in response to councilmember Dyak's question, this could be a modified displaced left.
And that's to continue the traffic flowing, but what's the accident rate on that? Was there any study done on that about, would that impact?
What it does, there's no numbers right now, but I'm sure that will be a part of this, kind of a feasibility study, but it is to allow this intersection to not, in engineering terms, I learned this from Chris Hudson, my favorite engineer, the, the intersection will not fail, so it's going to extend the life of the intersection with these, not only safety improvements, but it improves the operations, and also we're looking at pedestrian safety as well. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Thank you, no questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Rivero?
Thank you. So, from my clarity, you're stopping, stopping traffic on Parker Road northbound and southbound, and when we do, Main Street is a flow-through, and at the same time, you're turning traffic off on a left to, they don't have to have their own turns, they don't have their own phase at Parker and Main, they have a phase that is continuous. At the same time, the east and westbound traffic is flowing, you're also turning traffic left off of Parker Road, correct? You're losing a phase in our light signals.
Yes, you're actually displacing the left turns onto Main Street before the intersection, and the Parker Road, the main intersection, or the main road with the most traffic counts, right? That is able to flow continuously. Do you want to add to that, Bryce?
So, yeah, you are correct in the sense that what it does is it takes that left-hand turn movement and pulls it away from the intersection, so that 10 seconds, 15 seconds that's applied to the left is now added to through traffic because the turn is in the shadow of the through traffic.
Perfect. And then, this study would be for both north and southbound left turns to Main Street, or just southbound?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and just a feasibility study, but my question is, knowing how far 750 gets us nowadays, is this a good amount, or are we going to be going deeper down, looking for more studies? Is this, is this a good enough amount to get us a good quality study?
We believe so, and we've had conversation with CDOT, so, yeah, we do believe so.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, with that, we'll open this, oh, sorry.
Can you, is there another road or an intersection like this that could give us a good visual?
Gun Club?
Yep, so, Gun Club and E470 is a good example, where Gun Club and E470 are parallel, and Quincy is also, I think, the cross-street there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, with that, we'll open it for public comment at 7:54. Anyone with a comment on 9.369? Seeing none, we'll close it at 7:54 and bring it back to council in that reverse order for any final comments. Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, you know, I like to swim a lot, and there's always happy people in the pool. It's a few complaining, not too many. This morning, I was talking to a gentleman, and I just want to call out Tom Williams and his staff, that absolutely loves what you're doing with this town, and too, all too often, we get complaints all the time about the infrastructure in this town, and he was just so happy about some of the infrastructure improvements, how it made his life easier. He's a retired guy, HOA representative, and so I think we need to give a shout-out to Tom and his team, and also the planning, planning department as well, for improving the infrastructure and the traffic in this town, because we don't hear that enough, so I just want to say that.
Councilmember Wilks?
No, I just appreciate all the work that you guys are doing and the looking ahead to try to manage not just a now issue, but a tomorrow issue, so, thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
Yeah, I just, let's, let's do the study and see where it takes us.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
I'll be anxious to see where the study takes us as well. Thank you.
And Councilmember Rivero?
Thank you. And when I first got elected, and I've said this before, there were so many studies, and I understand why we had to hire consultants to do studies, to do this, to do this, I thought it was, was, you know, frankly, in my layman mind, ridiculous, just make a decision and do it. I've come to find out that that is what's going to cost the taxpayers more dollars, is not spending the money in the beginning and not being thorough in your reasoning, you're going to end up costing, you're going to install roundabouts that get ripped out, you know, because they didn't work, or you're going to do things that, that cost the city or the town, excuse me, more dollars later on. And a study, as our Parker Road corridor master plan did, allows us to put in place for the future. These are not decisions that will be made this year, they're not decisions that are going to be made when I'm sitting up here, or any of us are going to be sitting up here. These are decisions, these are generational decisions, and a study allows us to put into place easements and things, and looking for the future on what this town is going to grow into, and as we do redevelop our core, and the core is Parker and Main Street, and as we do redevelop those, we need to have those properties protected for what the future of this community is going to be, and I think this study will get us closer to doing that. Do I see dedicated, or, you know, dedicated turns like that? I don't know. I know personally, I missed the left turn when I got off to take Quincy one time, so, you know, it is, it does happen, but people will figure it out. It is something that I, I know now that by us spending a quarter, or three-quarters of a million dollars, we're going to save millions of dollars down the road if we decide that the road is just simply impassable and we have to start over. So, I welcome this study, and welcome to see what it brings for the future of this town. Well done.
With that, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 9.369.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.369 on second reading.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Wilks, seconded by Hendricks. Rivero?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Aye.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Next ordinance is ordinance number 1.598 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance conveying certain real properties by easement to Parker Water and Sanitation District for that certain portion of Lot 1 and Track A, Parker Town Hall, Third Amendment. Mr. Exstrom, welcome, sir.
Good evening, mayor, good evening, council. Okay, so, ordinance number 1598, we're dedicating an easement to Parker Water and Sand for the Town Hall expansion project. Little background, the design of the Town Hall expansion and renovation project is nearing completion. The project generally consists of a 32,000 expansion renovating existing Town Hall and related site work. Due to the expansion, the site requires two additional fire hydrants per code. Parker Water requires that easements be dedicated for fire hydrants located outside of the public right-of-way. The new easements will be dedicated by amending and reinstating the original easement agreement signed by the town and Parker Water on July 16, 2001, as part of the original Town Hall construction project. So, here's a map showing the amended easement boundary. The red circles are the new fire hydrants, there's two new fire hydrants that are required by code, and the blue circles are three existing hydrants, and what this easement proposes is to add those two fingers basically out to the red circles there and amends the original easement boundary. So, with that, staff recommends town council approve ordinance 1.598 on second reading, and I'll take any questions.
All right, that was fast. Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thanks.
Councilmember Rivero?
Thank you. So, everything besides the legs that go to the new hydrants is already an existing easement, correct?
Correct.
And then, this question not pertaining to this action tonight, are we going to be able to use some of our TAP allowances to pay for these new hydrants?
Luckily, the, the fire hydrants are no cost. We are upgrading the domestic water service line from a one-and-a-half inch to a two-inch, and we are using water credits for that purchase.
Not pertaining to the night's discussion, but thank you, just curious.
Councilmember Dyak?
I got nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
I'm just curious, fire hydrants, as they improve over the years, substantially different or not?
No, they're pretty much the same.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, with that, we will open up for public comment on 1.598 at 8:01 PM. Anyone wish to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll close it at 8:01 PM and come back in that reverse order, this time the correct way. Councilmember Hefta? I lost track the other time.
No comments, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Wilks?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No comments.
Councilmember Barrington?
I guess whether or not they've been updated in years, we still need them.
Councilmember Rivero?
I appreciate more hydrants, I know it makes it easier for boys and girls in red, so I welcome more hydrants and better safety for our building, our public's building. Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on 1.598.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.598 on second reading.
Second.
Motion is made by Hefta, seconded by Rivero. Rivero?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yep.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. I think that's the fastest one you've ever done, Bob. Appreciate that. All right, ordinance number 1.599 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance conveying certain real property by easement to Parker Water and Sanitation District for a portion of Salisbury Equestrian Park recorded at reception number 2004061175, and a portion of the corrective quitclaim deed recorded at reception number 2007021306 situated in the west half of the northwest quarter of Section 27 Township 6 South, Range 66 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian. Brett, did you have Mary Munikada help you with that one?
I did.
Okay, good.
Good evening, mayor, council. Tonight, I'm here requesting ordinance number 1.599 on second reading be approved for the Parker Water and Sanitation District well pumping and water treatment easement at Salisbury Park. A little bit of background, Salisbury Park North is a 91-acre park required in 2009 for park and open space purposes. We are currently in the design development phase for the park, including the pickleball courts. There is a 4.12-acre Parker Water and Sanitation District easement for well site pumping and water treatment that overlaps the future pickleball courts, which doesn't specifically limit another well from being built, so we're trying to clean this up and to limit the potential future disruption to the pickleball courts. Staff's recommending granting Parker Water and Sanitation District a new one-acre easement for those well site pumping and water treatment, and then there's an existing well there, and then having Parker Water and Sanitation District vacate that 4.12-acre easement. Parker Water Sanitation District supports this approach and will vacate the existing easement upon receiving the new one-acre easement. So, where this is located at on this map, the red dash line is the existing 4.12-acre easement, and the blue is the new one-acre easement, so you can kind of see there in the, that'd be in the southeast corner of the new Salisbury Park North, or the northeast corner of the existing park. Quite a bit smaller, cleans it up, keeps it in an area that we won't develop in the future. So, with that, I'm requesting recommendation is approval of ordinance 1.599 on second reading, and take any questions.
Thanks, Brett. Kick it off with Councilman Rivero.
No questions, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Barrington?
Where are all the pickleball players tonight to make public comment on this?
Playing pickleball. Playing pickleball.
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
So, this is really just looking forward to the future and relocating one of the ones that we currently have into, like what you said, a site that isn't for plan development.
Yeah, there's an existing well there, it's just, they don't need a 4.12-acre easement around it, they only need one acre easement around, so I'm cleaning it up, so in the future, if they wanted to do another well, it wouldn't be right in the middle of the pickleball courts.
Perfect, thank you.
And Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
All right, we'll open that up for public comment at 8:05 PM. Anyone from the public wish to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll close it at 8:05 PM, and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Hefta, any final comments?
No, just enjoying some reduced traffic in that area now. Thank you very much for the road construction, appreciate it, thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
No, thank you for cleaning it up.
Councilmember Dyak?
Nothing.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I'm good.
Councilmember Barrington?
No comment, thank you.
And Councilmember Rivero?
No, just appreciation for your work on this. Very appreciative to making the easement much smaller, four-point, whatever was enormous easement, especially as our partners at Parker Water, get away from aquifers and get more into potable reuse and natural water. So, again, truly appreciative and appreciative of, again, our partners at Parker Water for working with us on this, a separate enterprise, much to everybody's surprise.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion on 1.599.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.559, on second reading, please.
599?
1.599, please.
And I will second that.
All right, motion is made by Rivero, seconded by Barrington. Rivero?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Last ordinance of the night, ordinance number 1.606 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the right-of-way purchase and sale agreement by and between Mala Reddy S. Reddy 2012 Irrevocable Trust and the town of Parker for a portion of the quitclaim deed recorded at reception number 2013005536 situated in the northwest quarter of the Section 28 Township 6 South, Range 66 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian concerning the Matzenbacher Road project.
You have mouthfuls tonight.
They're big, they're big.
I think the legal descriptions have gotten deeper, I'm wondering if legal.
Is it because of the new county attorney? I mean, I'm just seeing that. I've never seen the principal meridian before, but it's always a new night.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, you have in front of you, first of a couple ordinances that are going to be coming at you, the next couple of meetings regarding Matzenbacher Road acquisitions that we need to make. So, June of last year, you guys approved ordinance 1.576, I'm not going to go into reading everything that's up there. That ordinance basically authorized the acquisition That ordinance basically authorized the acquisition from five different properties. One of them's already been done, it was a previous annexation agreement, they lived up to their obligations. This is the next of two more that'll be coming, and the fifth is actually one that's just a temporary construction easement, will not be coming to town council because it's temporary in nature. This ordinance addresses the, I call it a ready property, is what I call it, because as the mayor said, it's a mouthful. It's the biggest acquisition we have on the project on Matzenbacher improvements. We're actually smoothing out the Matzenbacher curve. So if you know where the tree source is out there, and you'll see a vicinity map, and it also includes some drainage improvements as well for the KOA Regional Tributary, storm drainage improvements. So this is a vicinity map, the ready zone roughly 45 acres and four parcels out there. They've acquired them over the last couple decades, according to their representative. Area in red is what we're acquiring. It's a fairly good chunk of the property, it's to smooth that curve out, and so it is going to be built when we're done at the posted speed limit, which is not the situation today. That's a big improvement. The yellow areas are actually temporary construction easement, and the blue is drainage easement, so we're gonna get, and a big chunk of that's the KOA Tributary, which drains back to the west of Jordan Road, comes down through this area here. And we're gonna be replacing a woefully underdesigned box covert today with a double-celled box covert with the project. This is a blow-up of it, so you can see a little bit closer. One thing I wanted to point out is the proposed alignment for Matzenbacher Road actually curves off the Matzenbacher alignment today to the new intersection. If I go back a slide, just to the new intersection there, that's gonna be the new intersection will actually serve Salisbury North in the future. But this shows basically how all the different pieces fit together that we're doing out Basically, 1.25, one and a quarter acres, this is roughly 2.5% of their property that we're acquiring with this project. We're getting almost one and a half acres of drain easement to both serve the KOA Tributary and some offsite runoff that will come from the road. We're gonna be putting in a ditch to run along the road out there, and 1.3 acres of temporary construction easement. We did an appraisal on this, we provided that cost, or the appraisal to the landowner, they accepted that appraisal. Good faith negotiations and a good appraisal upfront makes things go a little easier on this end, but the total for this is $361,300 in acquisitions for this property. We have funded this in the Highway and Streets Capital Project Fund, and staff recommends approval of this ordinance tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
All right, Councilmember Hendricks, you want to kick us off?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
So there's five property owners that are affected by this, but this, the ready property is, is the biggest?
Is one of the, yeah, biggest of the four.
Of the four remaining, it's the biggest?
Oh, by far.
Okay. And, and so the good faith negotiations that, you know, they've accepted the proposal, did, well, how do they feel about that?
So I've only actually talked with their representative. The Reddys are very busy people. They own multiple properties in Metro Denver, as in multiple hundreds, is what I've been told. Their representative was a former Public Works Director at one point, knows the process, actually knows the right-of-way agent that we used, and knows their appraiser as well because he's been in the industry, and he was very comfortable with these appraisals. They had the right to get their own appraisal under state law. They chose not to, they think it's a fair appraisal. A lot of detail goes into these appraisals that we get. We spend several thousand dollars getting them done, but there's lots of comparable properties, and with those facts, they can see what their value is, not just we're pulling numbers from the air, it's based on transactions in this area.
Great, I'm glad we're working with good people. Thanks.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, just something you touched on earlier, the posted speed limit for this road is 30, 35?
35.
But the suggested speed at those turns is less than that?
It's 25.
And so this improvement, this softening of that turn will allow a 35 mile an hour speed to carry through?
Correct, it'll be 35 mile an hour design speed, so 40 miles an hour, following our collector standards. It's actually, I won't get into the engineering jargon, but it's called a super elevated curve to make one as tight as we're doing.
It's banked.
It's banked. Other roads, you typically do not see that on a collector, but we're trying to minimize impacts to the property owner, and that's why we did what we're gonna be doing here on this curve.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Councilor Dyak?
Yeah, um, do we have any, when we, when we vacate the roadway, I think it's, I think it's sort of down, down south of the, of that, there you go. What are we gonna do with that? Are we gonna give that back to, offer it back?
It's absolutely chock full of utilities. Five Parker Water lines, multiple fiber lines, gas lines, phone lines, nobody really wants it, John, so.
Gotcha.
I think it'd be a great place for a statue, though, for a town attorney, former town attorney, do you think?
He's gone.
Yeah, he's not with anyone.
He's gonna hear it tomorrow, though, so.
You mean grandpa?
Well, you know, Mary Moonakata did note her favorite engineer, so maybe, Chris, we could do it for you there, so, yeah.
There isn't a statue big enough, no.
Wow. Councilmember Wilks?
All my questions are answered, so thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Well, playing off of John's question, you know, I live right there, so I see that all the time, and I know what people do on that road as far as speeding. And I've seen a lot of bikers and pedestrians and runners as well, and so with that extra roadway area, sort of, is there any?
So what we're doing with the project, we're building bike lanes on the roadway, so.
You are.
Yep, we are, and we're building a sidewalk on one side of the road, all the way along this stretch of road.
Which side?
On the north side, in this area, Matzenbacher Todd, but we're also building one coming from the south, will come up to the new intersection. We're leaving it off the inside of the curve because we don't know what the property owner is going to do on the inside of the curve. It's unincorporated, not gonna build it now, but people will be able to cross over at the Matzenbacher intersection if they happen to be on the west side of the road, and there's gonna be a 10-foot wide multi-use path all the way along that north side to get people to the east-west trail. So it's kind of a combination, multi-use trail, sidewalks, so if the people aren't comfortable riding in the bike lane, they can also use a sidewalk trail that's gonna be built along it.
That's excellent, thank you very much.
All right, with that, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:16 PM. Anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll close it at 8:16, and we'll go back to Councilmember Rivera for any final comments.
No, well done. I appreciate the good faith negotiations, appreciate the fact that the private property owners got their value for their property, and I look forward to the improvements and eventually to our park.
Councilmember Barrington?
So I, it's not just about widening the road, it's about smoothing out that tricky curve where people are gonna go 35, whether they should be going 35 in there or not. So I think it makes it a lot safer, and I appreciate it.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I'm in favor, thank you.
Councilor Dyak?
I have nothing.
Councilor Wilks?
Yeah, I mean, I've personally witnessed crashes there, and I've had a friend who lost a child there, so I'm very excited to make that safer. And as far as giving the property value to the property owners, I love that you guys always seem to do the right thing, and even though you stated it costs money to get that appraisal, I think it's vitally important, and I love that we have a good situation where the property owners are happy and we get what we want, too. So thank you for that.
Councilwoman Hefta?
Thank you, Chris.
My only comment is, Tom, can we get Chris some self-confidence training here while we're at it? So with that, I will entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.606.
I move to approve ordinance number 1 dot, oh, and I just lost the number. Say it again?
1.606.
1.606 on second reading.
I'll second.
All right, motion is made by Wilks, seconded by Barrington, Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?